Twenty-five, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald is not here. Commissioner Crystal Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson?
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon?
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to move on to the invocation given by Commissioner Robinson and the pledge led by Commissioner Burnett. If you'll stand with me, please.
Would you join me in a moment of prayer? Eternal Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty of the day. We thank you for the rain that you have washed us with. We thank you for the leadership for those who dedicated their time and their talents and their services to make life better for those in Alamogordo. Bless all of us, Lord, our military, our police, our teachers, our elected officials, and those who volunteer. Lord, make Alamogordo better tomorrow than it is today. And bless us to have helpful hands and helpful hearts to make this happen. This is what we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move on to approval of the agenda, we're going to be pulling off item six until the next meeting. And with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Tapley. Can we put up the vote, please? Oops. I guess do it again. Did anybody else get theirs twice? No. Something's wrong. Who's missing?
Mr. Guthrie? It's, um, yes. What's your button?
It never popped up.
There it is.
Okay, there it goes.
We're good now.
Motion passes six-zero. Are you in Adobe or are you in the other one? Okay, all right. Okay, well, motion passes six-zero. We're going to move on to presentations. I do have a presentation tonight. And I don't need that. We good? Okay. So, I was asked if I would consider writing some letters of appreciation to some of our military members who acted swiftly in a time of emergency and a time of distress. And I said, you know what? I'll do you one better. Why don't we invite them to the meeting? And so, if you're wondering why they're all here, I'm going to explain it to you. So, members of the Twenty-Ninth Attack Squadron's Big Give team were at the Alameda Park Zoo working on a project. There were, there was a two-vehicle collision that resulted in a vehicle rollover near where they were working. The members of the team heard the collision and took swift action to rush to the scene, assess the situation, and provide assistance to those involved. Emergency services were immediately contacted. Fortunately, only minor injuries needed to be addressed, but a woman involved in the crash was experiencing signs of shock. Senior Airman, is it really Nurse Morris or is that, it really is? I wondered if that was true or not. Nurse Morris, because the nurse was in quotes, so I wondered if that was true, immediately responded using her experience as a combat care instructor and previous medical training to provide a rapid trauma assessment to the woman involved in the accident. Senior Airman Morris stayed with that woman until emergency responders arrived and provided them with details of the woman's condition. The whole team from the Big Give demonstrated a professional, calm response to the emergency. Welcome to Alamogordo where it's almost like we schedule these or something, but anyway. Hey, you got to make light of it, right? Come on, guys, you know what I'm talking about. All right. So, anyway, obviously, I thought that was a big deal. You know, I really appreciate our military. Clearly, they are here temporarily most of the time, and for them to jump into an action in their temporary community like that and, and help somebody in that time of need is, it's really a big deal. It is. I've been in that situation. I've been the victim of the accident, and it's not a lot of fun. And so, I appreciate every one of you. I appreciate what you did, and I do have a letter for each of you. So, we are going to start with, okay, so is he here, Captain Michael Toscano? His wife is here. Okay, his wife is here on his behalf. How cool is that? They're both military. That's pretty cool, you have to admit. Come on up here. Yes, all right. And then, I'm just going to run this back. You can hold on to that. Okay? I don't, yeah. Oh, yeah, and I'm so, I am so sorry. See, you can tell I don't do this very often. This is, I want to make sure I get your rank right. Lieutenant Colonel Brandon Squid Taylor. And he is the one that wrote me. This is, he is, I'm assuming you're over the squadron, right? You're the commander of this squadron. And so, he's the one that wrote me and asked me about this. We were having a little technical difficulty. Apparently, our email does not like to talk to the military's email. So, he caught me at the Big Give celebration, and I said, oh, I'm glad you did that. So, it was actually, and I'm sorry, you are, what is your rank?
Uh, captain as well.
Captain. Captain Toscano's husband is actually, he couldn't be here tonight, so she's here on his behalf. And congratulations to you or to your husband. What about that, you are, I mean, thank you for your service. We also, oh, do you want to get a picture? We're going to play exercises. Okay. All right. And next, we have Captain Xavier, is it Purchase?
Yes, ma'am.
Purchase? Did I say it right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so proud. Okay. Here you go. Congratulations to you as well. And I do want you to talk about your Big Give project when you're done, all of you. So, hold on just a second. Then we have Staff Sergeant James Fletcher. Okay, that was an easy one. Staff Sergeant James Fletcher. There you go, sir. Thank you so much. And Staff Sergeant Joseph De Leon. And Staff Sergeant Tanner Daniels. I'm going to call you all back up in a second, so I don't think you're done yet. Okay. And Senior Airman Alexis Morris. Nurse Alexis Morris. I didn't forget. Okay, now, if we can have you guys all come back up here for just a second. Yeah. That's why I didn't shake anybody's hand yet. I hadn't forgotten, I promise. But I do, I, I, I wanted to point out that not only did they stop what they were doing to, to help the people involved in the accident, but what they were doing was a Big Give project. And for those of you familiar with the Big Give, this year, there were, gosh, do you remember how many projects? Sixteen. There were sixteen Big Give projects, not just in Alamogordo, but Alamogordo, Cloudcroft, and Ruto. So, it was a big deal. And every year, for those of you who don't know what the Big Give is, I think most of you do, it's sponsored by Casa Toyota, or, well, Casa Motor Group. And we have military squadrons and groups that pick a project, either in our city or, again, like I said, Cloudcroft, Ruto. So, and they go out and they do great things. So, who was, who, who was involved? All of you were. Who wants to tell us what you did?
You do.
Put me on the spot. So, yeah, so Twenty-Ninth, we always like to try to do big things. And we decided to take a large-team project. And we were trying to decide what project to do. And one of our leads, Melinda Veradino, she came up with the idea of working with the zoo because she's worked with them before. And she likes to work with kids as well. And we talked to them, and they mentioned that they wanted to redo their education center, kind of establish that for the kids of Alamogordo. So, we took up the project, and it was a big undertaking, to say the least. There was a lot of cleaning that was done, but we ended up developing a building with, we built a big artificial tree, I guess you could call, like a trunk, that kids could go inside. There's a lot of, there's two black lights in there, so it's like a big psychedelic area for kids to kind of have lunch and whatnot. Kind of just hang out. There's a lot of information centers within there, like to talk about bugs, spiders, ants. There's little section area where they can, there's like little boxes that are hidden where they can put in their hands in there and feel around and try to decide, pick out what it is, if it's like a tooth, if it's snake skin, what it belongs to. In the backyard of the building, we created a little pit, and there's two separate pits. One of them is for them to create like footprints in sand of different animals. And then, we created a fossil pit where they can, where we dug in a T-Rex fossil that they could go in and kind of dig out and be paleontologists with that and have some fun with that. And then, we also had like a little camp area that we put in one area, in one corner of the building, where they could have like presentations with some of the zookeepers. They could bring out animals and present to the, the kids and whatnot. And it's could be also another location where they could have like birthday parties, field trips, and just really get the kids of Alamogordo involved as well.
And tell us all what the end result was.
We ended up winning. We got first place, which was really awesome. It, it did take a lot of work. Everyone that contributed, we did a little over seven hundred hours of volunteer work. Pretty much worked every single day throughout July. Not a single day off, nor the weekends. We had about, in donations, our time spent if they had paid us and other volunteer work, it was about twenty-eight thousand, over twenty-eight thousand dollars of work and donations and materials that was given for this project. A lot of community members also volunteered. We have Muralist to help us out, David's Landscaping, so many people in that community that also wanted to get involved with us to give back to the community. So, was it just us, but also other community members?
And they stopped what they were doing to go up to Ruto so in health, and then they came back and finished their project. So, thank you for being so humble, but let's face it, that was a lot. It was a lot. It was, the hours that they put in was at least two, three times as much as anybody else, and they were all great projects. But thank you, thank you for your service to our country, and certainly, thank you for your service to our community. We appreciate that. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Were you the one that did the presentation? No, who, who did the?
It was her right over there. Grace Hughes.
Okay, so if you really want to know what sent them over the edge, it was this lady over here in her presentation. Rachel Lucero and I looked at each other and said, oh, oh, that's, we're all up in the fields here. So, yeah, no, it was very good. So, thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you for pointing it out to us, and thank you, guys, for what you did. We really do appreciate it. Thank you. Is it okay if I say it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
She was one of the victims of the accident. She's also our Alamogordo Daily News reporter, and she was pretty shook up. So, yes, it's okay. I understand. I do understand. So, hang in there. Thank goodness you guys were there and you acted as quickly as you could. We all really appreciate that. Thank you. Got it? All right. We're good. Thank you, guys. All right, the nurse has got you. Are you going to mute this, or do I need to set it off? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to public comment. I didn't have my recording during crime. I'm sorry. Let me look and see. I apologize. I'm used to having podcasts here that. Grab it for me. All right. We have two people signed up for public comment. The first is Dean Hackett.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for allowing the three-minute timeframe to have open discussion on this. What I've wanted to come talk to you guys about is I saw that the fairgrounds parking lot is back on the agenda tonight. It looks like you guys may be voting in for some time just to basically ignore the parking lot and leave it alone the way it stands for approximately five years is, is what it's on the agenda. I hope that you guys will please consider this and vote this through. The fairgrounds is, I don't believe that it's outgrowing, that we're outgrowing. The fair is not outgrowing. We're just outgrowing our parking. We're not outgrowing the actual fairgrounds. We, we still get fifty-five to fifty-eight thousand people come through over a four-day period every year. We don't, the parking is atrocious sometimes, but without you guys and the parking lot there available, there's no way we could even begin to think about doing anything there. Again, the, the amount of money that it will cost to remodel and rebuild someplace else is just astronomical, especially in these times. So, I, I hope in a five-year period, if you guys will sign this, and in a five-year period, maybe we'll have something different on the, on the agenda we can move forward with. I do hope that you guys will have a little bit of open discussion about the use and how that parking lot can be used. We don't currently have any type of MOU with the city, or neither does the county. So, I, I would hope that something can come about with that, and you guys will, should play a part in that discussion. And so, I hope you guys will, will take that into consideration too while you're voting on this. I think that's all I've got, and I appreciate you guys, and I yield back my time. And your phone is here, I believe?
Don't worry, I wasn't recording anything.
Thank you.
Not that it would matter, but. Okay. Clarissa Shehan, Shehan? I'm sorry, did I say that right?
Shehan.
Shehan, okay.
I'm going to be honest, this is my very first council meeting I have ever been to, so I just wanted to ask if I'm allowed to record. If not, that's okay. I just, am, am I allowed to?
Are you allowed to record?
Am I allowed to record?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I just.
It will also be online and available if you need it, so.
Great, thank you. So, funny enough, I have lived in Alamogordo for just shy of three years, and I will only be here for another week and a half. But I wanted to say good evening to you guys. My name is Clarissa Shehan, and I'm here tonight because what is happening to the tenants in our city and across New Mexico, I can assume, is not just unfair, but it is dangerous. I have already sent formal letters to members of Congress, including Dr., Dr. Congressman Vasquez, as well as Congresswoman Stansberry, urging them to take, to take action. I am here now because the, the harm continues, and I will not allow this issue to be ignored. The property management company, Future Rentals, is engaging in harmful, intimidating, and unlawful practices towards their tenants, myself being one of them. While I consulted a local attorney about this continued battle against this company, I learned that they were also representing at least ten other clients against the same company. This is not an isolated incident. It is a pattern. We are talking about a power imbalance that allows this company to damage tenants' credit, threaten housing stability, and twist contracts to their advantage, to their advantage, all while operating outside of the scope of the law. And this is not just financial harm. Tenants face harassment, retaliation, and intimidation simply for standing up for their rights. Many remain silent out of fear of losing their homes, and I was one of those people until this week when I signed a lease in Texas. And only now do I feel safe enough to actually speak out about it. Throughout my time as a tenant, I've endured numerous unsafe living conditions and felt deeply unsafe to push back or assert my rights. This experience in many ways has felt like leaving a domestic violence relationship, living in constant fear of retaliation, intimidation, and harm for simply wanting fair and lawful treatment. I am calling on this council to please take immediate action to launch a request of formal investigation into Future Rentals' business practices, strengthen the local tenant protections to ensure that no company can abuse its position without consequences, and create a clear reporting channel so tenants can safely document and report misconduct without fear of retaliation. If something is not done properly, my only, my only other next step and option is to contact the news outlets, outlets across the state of New Mexico so the public is fully aware of what is happening behind closed doors. As a CEO and business owner with a decade of professional experience, I have never dealt with such awful, unprofessional, and downright malicious individuals within a company as I have with Future Rentals. Thank you all for your time, and I urge you guys to make protecting tenants and landlords in this community a priority to this city.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioner McDonald, could you hear us?
Oh, I can, I can hear you.
Okay. And we can hear you. Okay, so, hands up.
Okay. Are we ready? Thank you for your comments, I'm, both of you. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to City Manager's Report.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commission, just a couple of things. Just a little bit of an exciting news. Finally, 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 the bridge was paved yesterday. The striping company unfortunately couldn't come out for another two weeks to get it striped. However, shout out to our Streets Department and our inspectors on engineering because our Streets Department stepped up today and said, we will take care of it. The contractor was fine with it because of their scheduling, so we expect, they've already marked it, marked the lines. They will stripe it tomorrow, I believe, and then it should be open on Mon, on Friday. So, that's a sign.
And we can feel safe driving over it now.
Yes. And just like I said, shout out to Eddie Garza and his team because they didn't even hesitate to say, we'll do it. They dropped everything, and, you know, they're busy in streets and weeds and all that, but they, shout out to them and our inspectors for getting out there.
Just when everybody wanted to jump up and go, are you serious? She gives us a however.
That's the clipping.
Thank you, Eddie. All right.
Hold on, I got one more, a couple more.
Yes, go ahead.
So, our poll, we've been getting questions on the status of the new auditorium. So, just wanted to give a quick update. We've been working diligently. If you recall, it was a concept design that came to you all. We will have final. was a concept design that came to you all. We will have final engineered stamped designs by December and it will go out to bid shortly after that. However, in the near future, the Parks and Recs Director is gonna put a survey out there for naming of the auditorium to get ideas of what the community, since it's a community pool, what do they want to call it, and then those ideas will come forward to commission, for commission to vote on the name of the, on the name of the auditorium. And then I just wanted to, I know everybody here probably already knows, but just wanted to put it out there again. Candidate filing day, one day, August the 26th. Mark your calendars just in case you forgot, which I know you haven't. And then I also want to embarrass somebody and shout out right now. Hilton Chapman, stand up, buddy. So Hilton, we are very fortunate. Hilton is our dispatch consultant right now. He has done a phenomenal job of working with the state, working with Taberta, getting us up and going. He went, we signed him and he went full speed ahead. He has a military background. He also worked at Taberta, and we are just extremely lucky to have him on board, so I just wanted to give him a shout out.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Hilton. I have heard great things. I'm very excited that you're helping us, so thank you. Okay, we will move on to remarks and inquiries by the City Commission. Does anybody have anything? Yes.
Stephanie, the ditch on Jefferson between Roosevelt and Aspen, is it possible that we can take a look at maybe clearing some of the debris out of there?
So I have been working on that particular one with Eddie and Jimmy because that one has gas lines running through it and that are being exposed. I looked at where it was on the priority list and it was lower on the priority list, so we're bumping that up so when we get our contractor in here to maintain it. That particular ditch is a finger, I don't know, what do you call the little, anyways, it's not a main ditch, it's an overflow ditch. And so we will clean it out and it needs to be slow because if you go through the whole thing, it's at different grades and different slopes and it hasn't been worked on in probably 20 years. And so that one has bumped up on the priority list because of the gas lines and the potential for it shutting down that block.
Yeah, because the street, the alleyway.
Commissioner Burnett, we can't hear you. Do you have it?
Yeah, the alleyway where the road is, it's washing out.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It washed our whole job site out last night.
And I got it from somebody. Was it, one of you said?
I sent you.
Okay, I know a couple, I've got it from you, so we will look at it again for the urgent need of that, but I will say we are, that has gone up to the top of the priority list.
I did receive a video that and I did pass it on to her, so. And there was somebody else, was that you?
Yeah.
That was included in that?
For?
I don't know. There was somebody else in the text.
It was, it was me.
Was it you? Okay. All right, so you saw my message then?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right.
I do have a question about, have we done anything about the traffic study on Juniper yet? Juniper and Indian Wells?
No, because that's Streets Department, so they're a little busy, but we will get on that. And I don't know if Jimmy.
I'll forgive them just because they striped.
Thank you.
I didn't make a way to.
Where was it again on Juniper and?
Juniper and Indian Wells, please.
Okay. Yep. Oh, the small mart. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Got a few things. I was just asking, seen on Facebook, we've canceled the Fourth Fridays a couple of times in a row. Do we have a reason for that?
Yes, the last one was Hector was out of town. He had to go, he was, he had to go out of town, and so we didn't have the staff or volunteers to set it up. That was July. August is going. I don't remember why we canceled June, but I know that July, I know why we canceled July.
Okay. Are we planning on canceling again in August or?
Not unless the weather or we don't have the staff.
All right, I just wanted to ask that question and I couldn't answer it, so. And then this morning, this one's kind of for Cooney, and the attorney will probably thank me on this one, but there was three officers responding to something this morning going down White Sands. The first two went by probably running 45, 50 mil, that's an average speed. The third one, it was around 7:35 this morning, I swear was running 90 to 100 miles an hour. I mean, and that seems a little excessive if they go and they don't make it to the site due to an accident or something like, it just seemed a little excessive, so I just thought I'd bring that up tonight if you also look into that. Like I said, it was between 7:30 and 7:35 White Sands Boulevard this morning and they were heading southbound, so. But, you know, due to some other lawsuits that were in, speed seems to be a factor, so. And then the other one I have is, the other day I was down here between 12:30 and 1:00 to attend a meeting, and I was walking around City Hall and I didn't realize it, but the entire City Hall is closed between 12 and 1 o'clock. And I, personally, I have an issue with that. I think we're here to serve the public. I think City Hall should be open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM all day long for people to come in, do whatever business through the clerk's office, the water billing, planning zoning, whatever it is. I personally think we should look into figuring out how to stagger lunches so that, there was literally three employees in the entire building when I was here on, it was on a Monday, and I just, I kind of feel that's unacceptable to have City Hall closed for a full hour just so staff can all go to lunch at the same time. And, you know, I understand certain departments may not have enough people, but the whole City Hall shouldn't be closed, so. And that's all I had.
I do have one last item, and Justin's gonna love me for it, but can we get an update on what's going on with the rec center parking areas? Because we still have parents that have no clue where to pick up children after school. I know, I'm getting a look. I've asked about it every meeting. I know, but it's a serious, it's a serious, because I hear every time I go, I hear about it.
Good evening, Mayor. Is she on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, I actually did put a PSA out prior to the west parking lot being closed. Still have people going in, walking their kids across the ditch. It's unsafe. We tried everything we could do. Police even showed up trying to send everybody around to 13th Street to go to the north parking lot because that's the only parking lot open right now, but unfortunately I can't really do anything. But I have been putting, I did put a PSA out. I even drew on the map where to drive and.
I don't know if there's anything else we can do, but I know that.
The only thing I can do is have the contractor park their equipment right behind the close sign.
And maybe we, maybe we do because every time barrels are moved, I don't know if people are getting out and moving them.
Yeah.
And then people are going different directions. I just think that there's still some confusion about where the direct path is to go. So I don't know if moving those road closure signs up and just closing, I don't know what's gonna help, but.
I can't move them up anymore because I want to make sure that the people that do live on 12th Street have access to the parking because they're not affected by the construction. So if I move them any further west, then it's gonna be an issue for them.
Can we put a bunch more barrels up and tie them together?
I mean, it can, but they'll still end up moving them.
They'll move them.
So the only thing I could think of is I could have the contractor start dumping material behind the sign and that way no one really can.
Yeah, I've just, I've seen it multiple, and I know you know I'm there every day.
I have my safety specialist out there every morning to try to help, but even then I've witnessed people yelling at the contractors, at city employees.
Well, now that schools and it's not so bad in the morning, where we're seeing the trouble is after-school hours when people are picking up their kids that go to the after-school program?
Yeah, because even the contractors did clean up Oregon from 13th to the parking lot just to have access and it's, I mean, like I said, the only thing I could think of is dump dirt right behind the close sign and.
Can you put a vehicle there?
We can.
A large vehicle?
Yeah, the excavator.
Two large vehicles?
I mean, they might jump the curb, but I'm just, you know, anything we can do to try. Okay.
So, yeah, I'll try to figure out another solution.
I appreciate your continued effort.
Like I said, I did have police and service to go out there and they even helped and it's still an issue, so no matter what we do, it's still.
Okay.
Becoming an issue.
Well, thanks for trying.
I have one thing on that, actually on 14th in Oregon, where it crosses over, that needs to be filled in right there.
So 14th is actually gonna end up, I was gonna put a PSA out on Friday, but 14th's actually gonna get closed down.
Okay.
That intersection while they, so we can actually tie in the water line to close the hole. Now that 10th Street's gonna be open. We were holding that detour open as much as we could just because of 10th Street, but we will have to close that intersection to tie in the water line.
Okay. Will 18th be open or will all of Oregon be closed?
I've been trying to get a schedule from the contractor to see when they're gonna pave up to 18th. I don't really have any insight on when that is. I've been trying to get that schedule. I do know that at the moment they have 66 days left, so.
I just with school and like I go through every day.
No, I agree, yeah. Unfortunately, I can't force them to do anything because I can't tell the contractor how to do their job. I just gotta make sure it's done correctly.
Do we have any Jersey barriers? Would that be something we can put or do we have to make it where it's still accessible over there where she's talking?
I mean.
Could you put the concrete Jersey barriers there behind the signs?
I mean, I don't know if the city does have those or not, but.
I don't know if we do or not.
I'm not sure.
So.
Like I said, I'll probably just have them dump material.
Yeah, they can't get out and move one of those very easy, so.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I'll try to figure that out just too, because like I said, we have been trying as much as we can. We've been having staff out there, even the contractors have people out there and we're trying our best, but yeah, that's all we can do, so.
Thank you, Justin.
Is that it? All right.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I think I need to mention something based on Commissioner Verden's previous regarding City Hall. So just so you know, we are gonna have to close water billing from 8 to 12, starting on the 18th. We have one staff member and they cannot keep up with everything that's happening. So we have one in the front, we have Nicole, we have, I think, two in the back that's trying to help, but with everything going on, shut offs, all, we're gonna have, we're at a critical staffing level that we're gonna have to shut down until we can get cashiers up at the front, and that's starting on the 18th. We are gonna, we talked about it today, we're gonna start blasting that out, we're gonna get signage all across City Hall. And as far as the lunch thing, like I said, we have one person, we have one person in planning and zoning. We've been closed for, since before COVID actually, to allow everyone to have a lunch because staggering lunches was extremely difficult when we didn't have the staff members and we can run in, we did actually, I think, run into some FS, FLSA issues by not allowing them to have their hour away or the time away from lunch. So I just felt that it's not just, City Hall will not be closed, but water billing will be closed. I just wanted, I was gonna put that in the report to y'all, but I just thought I'd mention it now.
This whole building's locked down during lunch.
Yeah, noon, we close for noon.
Yeah, I just, I feel that's unacceptable. We're here to provide a service to the community and, you know, a lot of people take off from noon to 1:00 for their lunch from their personal jobs to come pay their water bill and they come down here and they can't. I mean, I just, I see an issue.
We do provide online, they could do drop offs, we could do, there's a lot of ways we've offered it. We have, I don't know if you've gotten complaints, but we haven't gotten complaints because we've been, we, like I said, this has been five years now going. And I, I think that it's reasonable to allow staff dedicated time to go to lunch and to come back, so.
Is it a staffing issue? You can't get enough people?
Well, for, such as water, yeah, yeah, it's a staffing issue. We have issue in water billing turnover all the time.
What's the reason for the turnover?
Because the thought is, and I had this conversation today, the thought is when you apply for this job, your customer service taking phone calls, they don't realize they're gonna deal with a bunch of angry people yelling at them about their water bills, and that's not a joke.
Probably because they came between 12 and 1:00 to pay their bills. And the doors rock.
And so I think when they.
Do you guys understand where I'm coming from on that?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean.
I've had people ask me.
I've had several conversations with people about it and it's just.
We could be the gas company, open like an hour.
Need to make the best effort we can to make it accessible to pay your bill. I mean, they're literally here trying to pay us and we're closed, so, you know, and I'm kind of old school. I still drop bills off. I don't pay online or, I mean, I even still write checks, so that's, I'm still old school, so.
I get it, I get it, and we have a population that still likes to pay in cash and checks. I get it.
Yeah, so. I just wanted to bring that up, so.
On a positive note, or did you have something?
My turn.
Go right ahead. I'll just go last.
Everybody's chatty today.
I just have a couple of questions. Golf course closure, front nine, someone called me about it today and like, I know nothing about it.
I've been fielding that question all day too. So I met with Grant and Jason. As you know, we were going to, we are going to extend their contract from October to June. We were talking about all operations, but we are gonna close the front nine. Grant is agreeable to it as long as we have the driving range and the back nine open. And so Grant is fine with closing the front nine, so that's gonna be in the amended contract. So yes, we had, it was a conversation, but I hadn't had a chance to sit down with both Jason, Grant, and Lori to discuss their concerns about it, so, and I've been, I talked to a few people who've reached out to me as well. But yes, we are gonna close the front nine. We discussed that just today.
Okay, are they going to give any discounts on the trail fees and stuff that people have already paid or is that just?
So that is a grant, like, so are you talking like annual memberships or?
Annual memberships, you know, because.
So Grant has that discretion, that is not a city decision. So that, we could pose that question. We are extending his contract with an increase in the price, so, for loss of revenue. So the city would not object to him doing that. We understand that for the golfer's sake, it hasn't been playable, it hasn't been, you know, it hasn't been in the best shape and I don't know, I don't know if that's been posed to Grant, but the city would not make that decision and the city would not oppose it, let that happen.
Okay. The last couple of things, Sedona Ridge, the cracking on that, did you ever on the road?
Yes, sorry, I had to remember which one that was. We do not have the, Justin can probably tell me what equipment it is, but we do not have the equipment to do that one, but we are going, we know that there's several roads, not just that one that needs to do it, so that's gonna go in, that we need to fix. We're gonna look at renting and possibly getting that list together because we haven't really focused on that part of the streets, but we know that that's an issue. So with you bringing that back up to the surface, I talked to Jimmy, I've talked to Nunnely, I've talked to a couple of people. I think we are gonna have to either rent the equipment or see if eventually there's money in the capital budget to buy our own, because that's gonna cause bigger, cause bigger issues down the road when the water gets into it.
Right, right. And the last one, the Tierra de Sueno's house or Tierra, the house on Tierra de Sueno and, no, not on Desert Lakes, it's, Hamilton, there you go, I'll get it out here. The, with, I guess, the water valve or something like that, did you ever bring that up with Nunnely?
Yes, I thought I responded to you, I apologize. Yes, so Dave and I talked about it. So that house gets flushed for this reason every quarter, so they go out there and flush it every quarter. That day that you had reached out, Aaron went out there, checked the valves, flushed it, looked for any visible leakage to see why rocks or anything would get in there. There was no visible leakage that they can go in there and scope to see. They don't know if maybe it's on the property owner's side or not, but I know that they went out there and looked at it. As I had said, if he believes that's an issue, I would file a tort claim to then have us investigate it.
Okay, that's all I have.
So actually, it's on the golf course. What are they gonna do to help water the greens and the tee boxes on the front nine while it's down?
That's a question for Justin because I haven't been involved in the details of that. I know that they've spoken about it.
Because some of the greens on the front nine are starting to go.
So, hello again. Mid-America Golf, they actually have one person designated to watering the greens. You might see them out there, they're, they have a buffalo behind them, and they're constantly watering any holes that don't have water. That's what they do with the back nine. At first, it wasn't that way, but in the plans and in the contract it shows that the contractor is responsible for watering, so they have one person designated to do that. So they are watering it. You just probably don't see them all the time on that one hole because they're driving around watering every hole.
Before I do my few things, do you want to talk about the color run, the successful color run?
Yeah, so we had a color run Saturday, last Saturday. Cooney was there. It was all colorful. I'd like to thank all the volunteers, all the participants. We had about 150 people participate for our first fundraiser for our foundation. So my daughter passed away a year ago, May, last May, and 24, and so. And, uh, so we started a foundation in her honor, uh, dealing with epilepsy. Uh, so we have, uh, actually just partnered up with the Children's Hospital in El Paso. So, so, uh, they just opened up a epilepsy ward, uh, last October. So we're actually partnering up with them to help raise money for them and us as well, so, but yeah.
Heard it was very successful, I apologize, I was not there getting all colored up, but.
I tried not to.
It looked like a lot of fun.
I had a five gallon bucket dumped on me, so.
I was trying to figure out if everybody got home, like, and not got stuff all over their car.
It's just cornstarch.
Is that all it is? Cornstarch all over your car? I don't know. Okay, anyway, all right, on a positive note, uh, not that all that stuff wasn't positive, but, um, I did attend the big give, we talked about it earlier, we had the celebration maybe a week ago, week and a half ago, something like that. Um, that was a lot of fun, um, and, uh, it was good to see all our military there and representing, um, their squadrons and what they did for our city. So it was very good, uh, very cool to watch. And a lot of them did go up to Rudoso and help with the floods, and so it was exciting to see that. Also, last Friday, I missed you all. I was at the grand opening for the Family Fund Center, yay! Okay, well, I'm excited, anyway. Um, it was a great event, it was a good time, and, um, it is incredibly exciting to see that, that open. And of course, we love our neighbors up the road in Mescalero and we're very excited to be partnering with them. And so, um, super excited about that. And I think there was even a little write-up in the paper about it, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then also on Friday, Friday was a very long day for me. Um, I attended a leadership conference at the Worship Center. If you have not gone, it's the Global Leadership Summit. The Worship Center, um, hosts that on their dime every year. And, um, uh, I mean, you have to purchase a ticket, of course, to go, but, uh, well worth it. And, um, if you have not attended that in the past, I strongly encourage that next year because, um, one of the speakers was the coach from Alabama, whose name I can never remember. Help me out, Saban, Saban, right, Coach Saban. He was really, really good and, uh, um, anyway, I, I felt like I got a lot out of it. So if you have not been to one, I strongly encourage you next year to make plans to attend that. I think all my questions I just usually call you about, so I don't think I have any. And with that, if nobody has anything else, we can move on to the consent agenda. Just a reminder, we did pull off item six. Does anybody have anything else they want to pull off the consent agenda?
Oh, four and seven.
Four and seven. Four and, okay, four and seven, so, um, anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Let me just say it, it's two, three, five and eight. Items two, three, five and eight, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie, can we put up the vote, please?
Commissioner McDonald, how do you vote?
Aye.
You got it, okay. And motion passes seven, zero. We're going to move on to the first item, pulled off the consent agenda, item four. Um, you are not Barbara, but you are Evelyn.
I let her off the hook, I'm going to be here anyway.
That was nice of you.
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, um, so items four and seven are adding us into memberships of two cooperatives that we are not currently members of. Item four specifically is to join a cooperative, um, to be able to purchase some software that we're going to need for Dispatch. Um, it is literally the pivotal piece of software that handles all of the calls coming in. Um, so that is extremely important and not being able to procure that software is going to cause us to miss our go-live date for, uh, Dispatch. So that is the priority of that one. For item number seven, that is a cooperative. Uh, we are looking at possibly using something called infrastructure as a service. And this would allow us to go out and procure infrastructure as a service, which is something that we plan on bringing to you guys in the coming months as we, we do a little bit more research. But this is kind of the first step in, in that process.
Structure as a service, what is that exactly?
It's a very interesting concept. It's, um, where we would purchase services that come in and improve our infrastructure and then we would pay it on a monthly basis, but it has, does not have interest like traditional debt.
So you save money?
You save money because you don't pay traditional debt service on it. Uh, there are some other caveats in terms of if you default on it, there are some different ownership things that are different than traditional debt.
This has been something that we have tried to wrap our head around for probably six, seven months now because it's just a new concept. So a good example is if our roofs need replacing and we don't, we don't have the $5 million to come up with our roofs. We can go as infrastructure as a service where they finance it for us. We have a monthly payment that we can afford. It's just, it's just a very new concept that's.
So we're trying to lay the groundwork for it.
So the RFP process for the contractor would still be similar, or do they pick a contractor?
It would be, so the RFP process for the contractor would go through the company that we chose to do the infrastructure as a service. So we still have input, they actually handle everything from the design, the project management and the procurement of the contractor, all the way through the construction, construction management. And so that's the other part of it, is that it gives us a full package and that we're paying on the full package versus piecing it together.
And then we also talked about when we, if we do go this way, seeing what caveats we can have that they try and subcontract, subcontract local vendors and trying to make sure that that's put into the RFP because we understand that the concern's over the year out contract. And so we want to make sure that if we go this route, that we have some kind of caveat in there that.
It's basically real similar to state procurement or, or, or the statewide price agreement or?
Correct.
But it's just nationwide?
Correct, both of these cooperatives are. Similar to the ones we're already members of, which are Omnia, Sourcewell, um, we're a member of CES, which isn't nationwide, but those are, Sourcewell and Omnia are the big ones that we're already members of, and these are two additional ones, uh, that we're not currently members of.
That infrastructure deal, is it, what all does it cover? Like, does it cover water lines or is it just roof replacement or?
No, so actually, the, the thing that we've been looking at it most for is water meters. Um, it fits because water meters do not fit the traditional debt model because they do not live for 30 years. So I cannot go out and get a loan to do water meters because they're not going to live the life of the loan. So this gives us the opportunity to do a debt-style replacement for water meters, make monthly payments, not have to fund it all with cash upfront, um, but get all of our water meters replaced at once and not have to do a phase.
And if we were to approve this, like, say you guys did go out for a deal on state, does it come back to us for approval before you guys do it? Or does that cut the commission out of the loop?
The, so, the, the infrastructure as a service, we would bring to the commission because it's, it's a large contract. Per our purchasing ordinance, other purchases under cooperative agreements does not come in front of the commission.
Okay, does there a dollar amount on those?
There is not.
So you guys could do a $20 million project, dollar project without our consent?
We could if we went through a, a co-op, yes.
Okay, interesting.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, so, so, I, yeah, I have a quick question, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So how is it cheaper, I mean, I mean, how, how would it be cheaper on the city to, to do something like this?
So, um, we, per my direction, um, for the last several years, we have stopped using cooperatives as much as we did. There was one point in time where we, we used cooperatives almost completely. Um, there are some situations where it fits really well. Software is a, a good example. Software is very hard to go out to a traditional RFP because there's so many different software companies and they don't have to respond. And so most software is procured under cooperative agreements because that is the preferred method that software companies go to. They, to be 100%, they're not going to fill out an RFP. They don't have to, they don't care. Um, and so that's where the cooperative agreements. Another one that we've had a lot of success in cooperative agreements is playground equipment. Same sort of thing, there's a handful of companies that are willing to do playground equipment. They're in such high demand, they're not going to respond to an RFP. So that's where the cooperatives come in, they give us, um, another one is computers. Dell is not going to come out and fill out an RFP, they're not going to. But we need Dell computers. So we go through NASPO, which is another, um, cooperative that allows us to, to buy Dell computers at a greatly reduced rate than what we would do if we were just buying them on the open market. So that's where those cooperatives help. 100%, there are some things that they are not cheaper in. Um, construction, I think, is an, an excellent example of that. I personally think competitively bid construction is, is way better. It, it opens a lot more doors, it gives you a lot more information. So we have stopped using, um, cooperatives for construction projects unless there is some weird mitigating circumstance, uh, which we have not faced in the last two years that we've been making sure we competitively bid that. We, we don't purchase a lot of vehicles through cooperatives, we do that through the statewide pricing agreements. Um, so there are some situations. One of the things you're going to see tonight in executive session is we're bringing you six firms that would be hired through cooperatives if you wanted to use the, one of these as a recruitment firm. So these cooperatives are huge, they have so many varied things and some of them work really well, and in my opinion, some of them don't work well at all.
So, so item four and item seven really don't go hand in hand?
They don't go hand in hand in terms of joining NPP and joining PCA. It's not like you get both of them together. They are the similar thing. They're, they're just, they're like joining, you know, um, the PGA versus Live Golf.
Gotcha.
Do the same thing to separate entities.
Okay, so we can, okay.
Is there any annual membership fees?
No, there's no membership fees.
On, on either of them?
On either of them.
Okay. The state price, uh, statewide price agreement and the CES and stuff aren't similar to this? I mean, they don't have anything within the state of New Mexico?
Um, yes, they are similar to this. Um, so statewide pricing agreements, obviously, those are bids that are put out by the state purchasing office. So they put those out and then you can use them as a state contract. CES is the same thing, they put out a procurement, everybody responds to that. Um, it just, they don't cover everything, especially these big national softwares, which is what item four is really focused on. They don't usually respond to state-specific RFPs and the state has really gotten away from issuing those because there are so many options on the national level that they don't issue state contracts for software anymore.
A little concerned about the, the dollar amount, there's no cap. Like on statewide price agreement, I think, was it four million? Or CES, one of those, there's a cap of four million and a million?
I think CES, there's a cap, but, but like I said, our purchasing ordinance very specifically says that if it's purchased through a, um, a cooperative, it is considered competitively purchased and, and does not require commission approval. So that would be an ordinance change that we'd have to make.
Yeah, I just, a little concerned about that because then we aren't aware of what's being spent.
Which is why we've changed a lot of our bidding practices over the last two years to bring, you'll see that. You've seen more competitive bids in the last year and a half than you probably saw in the three years before that.
Anybody else? Okay. I believe we have to vote on these one at a time. So we'll start with item four. Consider an act upon City of Almagordo becoming a member of the National Purchasing Partners, NPP. Do I have a motion to approve item four?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Tapley, can we put up the vote, please?
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
And motion passes seven, zero. Moving on to item seven. Consider an act upon the City of Almagordo becoming a member of the Purchasing Cooperative of America PCA. Does anybody else have any questions?
This one's exactly similar, software?
This is the one actually that we are joining specifically to look at the infrastructure as a service. They do offer some software offerings, but most of those we could get from other cooperatives we're already members of. This is based around the infrastructure as a service.
Infrastructure as a service, okay. And is there, again, is there a cap on any of the?
No, there's, there's not a cap.
Okay.
Anybody else? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson, do I have a second? Here, I'll second it, how's that?
There you go.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
And motion passes four, three. All right, we're going to move on to item nine. Discussion and possible action on request from Patriot Point Apartments that the city provide funding for perimeter sidewalks in the city right of way and to waive water and sewer tap and impact fees along with the dedication of the infrastructure in the city. Uh, Commissioner Guthrie, you asked to bring this forward.
Yeah, this was from our last meeting and we did not finish discussion because we were looking into what we could and could not do. Has there been any progression in any form?
Apologize. So what, as far as what he was asking originally, that was already discussed, that goes against ordinances. Um, we gave the estimate, he, he sent a new letter in there, I have that new letter and what he's asking for is.
It says an incentive grant, but we don't provide incentive grants.
Yeah, and so that's where I think we're, we're asking, or I'm asking, to table this until we have our housing discussion. Because Darrell is working on some things with the county attorney, I'm working on some research over here and where we have the whole discussion. I think because, I think what needs to happen is if you want to do this, the commission, it needs to be, um, a type of incentive grant, housing incentive that has an application process that's afforded to all of the developers. And the criteria, we could discuss what that criteria has to be, over 100 homes or whatever that criteria is. But I think it would be best if we tabled and went, had our housing discussion.
I prefer to do that as well.
And just so the commission is aware, I have been in contact with the county attorney. They are looking at different options that the county can help with the Patriot Point. Um, one of the options that they are leaning towards now, excuse me, is, uh, declaring it kind of a redevelopment area, which, um, would require action on the city's part to label the area a blighted area. Um, that does open up some different funding. However, I am looking into the legal ramifications of the city, should we declare an area blighted?
Yeah.
Um, it, it's, it's a scary word, but we, we, I am looking into, uh, so that way, when we kind of have that meeting, uh, that, uh, Dr. that Dr. Henin has brought up, that way, the commission can have a full realization of what different implications would be on our different options. But, I am in contact with the county attorney, looking at just different options that we do have. So, we are still exploring those. I'm also in contact with several other city attorneys that have done redevelopment areas or are looking into them, kind of the pros and cons, just so that way, the commission can be fully abreast before you guys make a decision.
I think Otero County is looking at like a property tax freeze to keep it at the current level even after the structure's built for like six or seven years. And then, have we, I know we had talked about it last time, but our grip ordinance, maybe retooling that and bringing it back is something. Because, you know, whilst giving away sidewalks and sewer taps, water taps and stuff is kind of, sets a precedence.
And so, grip is the one, one of the pieces that I'm looking at to try and how can we bring it back better so that we have a cap on it and, you know, there's a better application process, if you will. So, yes, we are.
And there's actually a dollar amount rather than?
Yes.
You know, based off of?
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
But, they have to buy local.
So, a project of that scope is going to be very difficult for them to buy local. There's, I was having that conversation with Commissioner Guthrie and Mayor Protem McDonald at the last, at that budget meeting. And there's not a lot of people in Almagordo that are capable or able to supply that amount of material or that amount of labor or, you know what I mean? That's a large project. It's a $22 million project. So, we may have to look at tweaking that ordinance a little bit due to the nature of that project. It's just nobody here, you know, I know even the bigger guys would have trouble keeping up with a project of that size. So, but, if we could just look into that and see how it works.
Well, and I know he was on a deadline that was pretty specific, but I think with our meeting coming up, we could have some kind of answer for him, I'm sure, after that.
And then something after, because that's just a workshop, obviously. There's no action items. Out of that, we would bring something forward.
Put it on the agenda after. Okay.
And I'm set to go to Santa Fe. There's a gathering of municipal attorneys. And I've already, I've mentioned that I've reached out to several different cities of various sizes and I have set to meet with them about specifically this area and kind of the things that they've experienced, the pros and the cons of doing different options and trying to make sure that we do promote development, but also, as Commissioner Riordan mentioned, we don't want to set a dangerous precedent that could cause the city a lot of, a lot of money.
Just ideas to incentivize.
So, this blight thing, which I, anyway, you can't just declare that spot that they're building the apartment building on, like blight. You're talking about the entire area.
So, I'm looking into the, like, what the legal specifications for the Redevelopment Act, what would be required to, like, the size of what would be called, to be called a blighted area. Also, I am in touch with a private attorney that has done many redevelopment areas throughout New Mexico. And so, they're going to kind of help walk us through specifically Almagordo and just making sure that, you know, because it does have such a strong connotation, blight's not a pretty word, and just making sure that, like, you know, people's property values wouldn't drop or kind of what are the ramifications of doing, going that approach. So, specifically for the Almagordo area. So, I'm hoping, and I will have those answers for us by the time we have that, kind of that big coming together to talk about different options for the city.
Okay. So, we have apartments being built out in Mesa Verde.
The Sondora Apartments, yes.
Yeah. So, what are we going to do for them? Because we cannot declare Mesa Verde blight. So, that's out.
And again, that's just kind of where.
What? I'm serious.
It is a, it is, it's in the New Mexico statutes that that Redevelopment Act does have ties to state funds and things like that. It is not commonly used, but so are a bunch of different incentives. They kind of come and go and gain in popularities. So, this one is starting to rise. And so, that's why I'm meeting with a bunch of the other different municipalities that have experienced this. So, then that way, we can kind of have at least a snapshot of what would happen if we did this, what would happen if we didn't, just because it is kind of an emerging, an emerging practice amongst municipalities whether they consider it or not. And it's just to gather information. So, then that way, the commission could decide whether to go that route or not. It's just to give options.
Also, if we look at the grip or freezing of the property tax, our portion, I mean, that's a pretty valuable tool that we could offer them as well in that same area, you know, if we go that route.
Well, again, if we freeze property taxes for him, we have to do it for everybody.
Necessarily.
Well, I think so.
Just see what staff brings.
How can you not? How can you not? How can you have all of these builders that come into our city or that are local builders and not freeze their property taxes, but do it for this person who lives out of town? I'm not, I'm not against these apartments. I am against freebies. I'm against giving away taxpayer dollars for someone who does not live in our city and who is likely going to sell that apartment building as soon as it's built or shortly thereafter. I'm against that. And if we're going to do that, then we need to look at it for everybody and not just this person. And that's where I think it's going to end up costing our tax dollars or our taxpayers a lot of money. And I just don't believe that we can pick and choose. I think that's incredibly disingenuous of us to pick and choose because of this 114 units or whatever. And again, I'm not against it, but I believe that Mr. Valencia can build those apartments regardless. And I believe that he will build them regardless. He owns the property. Either that or he's going to sell the property. It's one of the two. But, I think we're setting a very dangerous precedent.
Let's just wait and see what staff brings back to us and see if there's a way we can help. You know, the biggest problem is with these type of deals is there's no comps in the area. The last one was built in 1999.
I, I'm well aware of that. I've been dealing with him for four years. I know exactly what the issues are. I understand that. But, he does have his funding. He does have his funding now. He's got HUD funding. He showed us a letter. He's got, am I correct that he has his funding now?
He should be in there.
So, that's not the issue now, because he has his funding.
Do we need to just table this? Do you need a motion to table this or?
I said possible action. So, I think we're okay to table, oh, make a motion? Yeah. Yeah, let's make a motion to table it.
To table it. Do you want to set a date or just leave it open?
I say leave it open, depending on what happens at the housing workshop.
Housing, okay. Make a motion to table item, what item we on? Item?
Nine.
Nine.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Riordan and a second from Commissioner Robinson. Sorry, I don't mean to laugh. Anyway, can we put up the vote? Thank you.
Mayor Protem, McDonald's, how do you vote?
Aye.
And motion passes seven zero. Okay. We're going to move on to new business. Item 10, consider an act upon Resolution 2025-24, updating the notice of right to inspection of public records. And our city clerk has some information for us.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem Commissioners, I have before you the resolution for the notice of right to inspect public records. I want to share some information with you. The city manager wanted all public records requests under the Inspection of Public Records Act to be centrally located under the city clerk. This is the reason for that, for the change of this notice. There will now be only one custodian of public records for this purpose instead of three, which were the city clerk, the Almagordo Police Department and Municipal Court. On September 15th, the notice before you to inspect public records will take effect. This will include the purpose of the act, how to submit requests, including on a new portal, required information for a written request, the response time, broad and burdensome requests, the inspection hours, production of records, so that's when we produce parts of records as we have them, uncollected records and the cost of records. The changes I will have to the costs are, for copies are going from 50 cents to a dollar as the act permits. Some electronic records, including videos, audios, photographs, emails and records, over 31 pages will be provided on a USB drive. The USB drive will go from $7 to $10 and we will no longer use CDs or DVDs, as someone pointed out, who uses those anymore. So, I'm going to give you an overview of where we currently are and where we have been. So, for my department, since January, we have received 103 requests, which myself and my deputy clerk have been solely filling those requests. 12% were for city commission records, as you guys well know. 15% were for the fire department. 12% were for planning and zoning records. 11% are for emails and these are our most consuming records requests. Currently, we are working on one since May, which has over 16,000 emails and we are almost halfway, we're a little over halfway done. The two of us, the city, the deputy clerk and myself, along with one of my new IPR specialists that just started a week ago, have been working on this request for 56 hours in total. The reason it takes so long to do email requests are because we have to open each email and all attachments. So, we are ensuring that we can release the records. And if there needs to be any redactions made, and that is when we have to blackout information that cannot be released according to the Inspection of Public Records Act. Our biggest request for emails took over six months to complete. And that was, my deputy clerk and myself worked on that one. Then, when we were complete, the requester said, "I no longer need these requests," or these emails. The average time spent on a single request other than email searches is two to three hours. So, I'm going to switch over to what APD has been working on, the Almagordo Police Department, since January. They have received 729 requests. And I can tell you, in one single day, just a couple of months ago, I counted 17 public records requests that came into them. And each request had several lapels that they were requesting. Of these, over 50% are for officers' body worn videos. One 20-minute video can take at least one hour to watch and to redact. If multiple officers are on scene, all their body worn videos must be viewed for just one single request and redacted. Currently, the two records ladies from the Almagordo Police Department have been working diligently on the numerous requests, but even then, they are backlogged by approximately 60 requests. There are over 45 requests for body worn videos that have been completed but have not been paid or picked up. Many requests that come into APD are known as commercial requests. These are requesters that want records, mainly police videos, to make a profit off of social, their social media, whether it's YouTube or by other means, which is very unfortunate for the people in the videos. Years ago, a family came to me with tears. Literally, I was in a conference room with them and they asked me if anything could be done about these requesters posting the videos of their loved ones being in terrible incidences. And sadly, I told them the act does not prohibit such requests from requesting these videos. So, there has, there will be an increase, even more so when dispatch comes over, because currently, Taberta is the one that is filling those audio, radio transmissions. Once they come over, it will increase even more than that. The Inspection of Public Records Act was created for transparency of the government. I strongly believe that the last, in the last few years, it has evolved into something it was not intended to be with these types of requests, such as commercial requests. Studies in New Mexico show that there has been a 200% increase in public records requests. So, moving forward, after gathering all the records and before sorting through them to extract and redact, we will advise the Requester of the fees and collect the payment for these USB drives as listed on the notice. Municipal Court, it's unknown how many requests that they have. However, they don't have as many under the act because they have what's known as window requests when they come in and they're actually recording, requesting actually, like, "I want to pay my citation." So, they don't have as many, but I don't have a number for you. So, Mayor, Mayor Protem Commissioners, I ask that you approve this resolution.
I have a question. This is basically customer service, is it not?
Well.
When people request information with IPR.
It's, it's, we do have to fill those requests according to the act.
State law.
It is.
And what you're asking us to do is to have the people to pay for the work that you're going to do with?
No. So, we don't get paid for our work.
You get paid for the materials that you provide.
We, yes. So, we, we're, all we're allowed to do is to charge for the materials. So, that would be the USB drives or what, you know, if we were to have been charging for the DVDs or the CDs, we're allowed to charge for that. While the act does say that we can charge for the transmission of records, we, we don't do that. We haven't done that. And current, actually, I'm going to tell you that there's some city clerks that say that's a little contradicting. So, we don't charge for the transmission of.
So, in this resolution, you're asking us to approve this. Is there anything else you need as this is increasing to such an alarming rate where people are requesting information all the time?
So, currently, with the division that I have under me, the IPR clerk from the Almagordo Police Department, that position was transferred over to my department. And I have another employee also for, so I'm going to have two IPR specialists. However, the requests and how they're coming in, just fast and furious, the way that they are, I can assure you that we're going to need more people. I can tell you that in Albuquerque alone, as big as they are, they have like an entire division where they have the city clerk and then they have an actual manager. Right after the manager, he has like five IPR specialists. Underneath each IPR specialist, they have like four tech specialists. Under each tech specialist, they have now part times. So, it is a huge operation.
Quick question on that. In your, in your resolution here, the whereas 203-240, it has the city manager setting the fees in your resolution rather than the commission setting fees?
Yes, Commissioner Riordan. So, that is in the ordinance. So, if you go under the city clerk duties and it, it talks about records and records being provided to the commission government. So, therefore, I provide those to you. However, it says that the city manager can set the fees for those that will be charged to the public.
Instead of the commission setting the fees?
And however, anything that I would bring to the city manager, I will not go out of the Inspection of Public Records Act law.
Is there a cap on how much we can charge for that or is it just?
So, per page, you can, the cap is $1. And so, that's why, I think you were out when I said as permitted by the act. The only other cost that it talks about is the, you know, for an electronic method, that it's the cost of the device, whatever the device may be. And the transmission, but we're not going to charge for the transmission of.
I think that's actually kind of cheap for the amount of work you guys have to do.
Can you repeat that?
I said it's kind of cheap for the amount of work you guys have to do.
It certainly is. And while, you know, we work. It, it certainly is and while, you know, we work diligently, I can tell you that there was one week where my deputy clerk and myself were working as much as we possibly can and it kind of offsets the both of us when we're having to do our normal duties, working with the commission, working with the front office, admin work, and then now we're doing public records requests. So although there are requestors that aren't happy with the time and maybe turnaround time, this is what's considered a burdensome because we also have to fill our own duties. We're not, that's why I have two IPR specialists that are going to be designated to this. But my deputy clerk and myself still have to continue to do this work.
Is there, I know this is kind of off the beaten path, but is there something that could be done? I'm just saying this because we went, I went to the Mali Conference recently and we talked about this very specifically.
Which was great, right?
It was amazing, by the way. There, there needs to be more than just two people. Is that something that can be discussed? Could, could you actually break it down and say?
Yes, so this is new that we're moving the IPR under one department because as I was copying on some of these or just even talking to Rachel, talking to Chief Penny Harrow, there was inconsistencies in some of how it was done at the police department and at the, at cities clerks. So I, first step was to bring them under one, get them trained. The idea was to have more, but because of budget, we wanted to kind of look, see what we're doing, see how it's working and see really what the staffing levels need to be. Originally, I think Rachel asked for three people. Is that correct?
Right, I had asked for a supervisor and two.
And so we just kind of, we're baby stepping it, but we 100% agree. If you see these records requests, it's, they're crazy. And I do think that there needs to be more people dedicated to it.
Yeah, I think once we get it switched over, we need to revisit this topic.
And then we're also exploring software. We're going to Next Request, which will be an online portal to do records requests, but we're looking, we do look to see if there's any software out there because IPR isn't new. And so we're seeing if there's anything that can be done to help maybe with redactions or any of that.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item 10?
I move to approve motion 10.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Guthrie. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please?
And Mayor Pro Tem, McDonald Wood, how do you vote?
And motion passes 7-0. We're going to move on to item 11. Consider an act upon resolution 2025-27 delaying the sale of the Fairgrounds parking lot for five years to allow Otero County time to identify an alternate location and develop a phased plan. And you're on.
Yeah, so I'm actually going to let my intern, we're at the end of our internship.
Oh, sorry. I guess I should have looked there first.
And so.
It's already been a long night.
As you know, he, he wants to go and be elected official, so part of his internship was to bring, I was hoping to bring an ordinance under the resolution. He was at the meeting, at the joint meeting, and so I thought this would be perfect for him to kind of speak on, so I'll let, Priam.
Hello, Priam.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners and city staff for letting me present this and giving me the opportunity. So this resolution gives time to the county to make a plan, a phased plan, and develop an alternate location for the Otero City Fairgrounds, County Fairgrounds, sorry. So the county fairgrounds, they, it was built in 1939 and it was used by the military during World War II. It is kind of outdated, in my opinion, and there has been an increase in traffic in that area over time. And this plan gives a pragmatic way to start moving the ball. I believe this issue has been in our county for, or city for decades now and not much has been done about it. I think this is a way to make the ball move and develop a plan and we can, you know, this plan, this resolution isn't saying we're going to sell it. It is just saying we can, we should move on, develop something, make a plan and work with the county to make a new fairgrounds. And for example, I live on the fairgrounds. My dad, he's the owner of the Motel 8 and I'm directly affected by this. And the north side of town, it's kind of underdeveloped and I've lived there my whole life, haven't seen much. There is stuff going on now. I believe there's a gas station being built and seeing some more stuff being built there in the future would be an exciting development.
You did fabulous.
Thank you.
Didn't he do fabulous?
I was a little nervous. I'm very nervous.
I have a question. Is there a possibility that we could move the ball faster in three years? I'm just asking.
Uh, you know, I think that's a good idea, in my opinion, but if we're looking realistically, I do understand that the developing a new fairgrounds would be expensive, but if we worked with the county, we could see what their idea is and three or five years could
Okay, I want to roll this back just a little bit. Did we ever, we never decided that selling it was something that was going to be done? So all we're talking about here is delaying a decision of?
Yes, so no, no decision has ever been made to sell the parking lot.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Yes, I apologize. Yes, it's just to stop any future conversations for the next five years to give time to develop a alternative site, which we've always, we have sites to offer if that's a part, what, you know, where we want to go and to develop a phased plan. Because I, I think a phased, or any plan, I guess, what the county wants to, however they would like to do it, and we'd be more than willing to work to assist on.
And if you recall, we did offer alternative sites. So we did offer as a city to, and I'm assuming that would still be a thing in five years or it would be an option in five years, I guess, none of us can really say, but.
So all this is a commission in the future.
So we, we're halting all communication or we're halting decision and continuing on with communication? Because I think it's really important, not only that we're discussing it with the county, but also the Fairgrounds Board, because they're the ones that have to deal with this specifically.
I, I guess I say discussion as far as selling the parking lot. So if a developer were to come and say, "We would like the front half or from whatever," that would be, well, there's a resolution not to sell this, so we wouldn't enter into those conversations. And then it would be, we wouldn't, I come to you probably, since I've been here, it's been at least three times because somebody approaches us. I wouldn't have to bring that forward because there's a resolution already in place that says we're not going to do anything for five years.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
It's more of a good faith for the county to show and say, "Hey, guys," and the Fair Board, that there's no intent of selling it at this time and just to put their minds at rest and.
Yeah, I just want to clarify because it does say, "Develop a phased plan."
Yeah, I was a little, I was actually going to mention that in the, in the, the deal, the commission agrees not to sell the property for five, or let's see up here on this, the next one. It, it gives Otero County Commission, Staff and Fair Board time to identify a site and develop a phased plan. It's kind of like we're trying to force them to do that.
Yeah, I don't like the way it's written.
That's, not really was the intent. The intent was to give them a, a good faith that we aren't going to sell it out from under them. And then we sit down with them and have a conversation of how the county, the city and the Fair Board want to proceed with, with the fairgrounds, you know? Is, is it on the table to move it? Is it on the table to leave it there? You know, that's kind of how I envisioned it when we had the meeting down there. This kind of makes it sound like, "Hey, you guys got five years, you know, make it happen." So.
I guess what we're asking, can we revise the resolution to make sure it's clear what we're stating?
Give me the wording, because we went back on several different ways to write.
I just don't want it to sound like we're trying to force them to do something. It's more of a resolution, because this can be rescinded at any time. So it's more of a resolution, just as a good faith to the county and the Fair Board that the city's not going to sell it out from under them. So I don't know how you want to word that.
May I say, for example, I think this is a good way to start the communication. Maybe the wording is a little forceful and, but you know, since this issue has been on the agenda for decades now, I think this would be a worthwhile way to make a plan.
Push them a little bit, huh?
I do think we, it says, "Whereas the city commission stated in the joint meeting that the fair and rodeo has outgrown its current location." I think that's a bold statement because they may not feel the same way. And then it talks about giving them time to identify and develop a phased plan. I'm almost wondering if we can't just take those two out.
So that statement was in the joint meeting, so I took, I listened to the joint meeting, so.
So you're just saying that was a statement in the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, what was the second one?
Um, just where, it says, "Whereas the city commission has agreed to give the county commission, staff and Fair Board time to identify a site and develop a phased plan," which isn't necessarily what we've agreed to do yet.
We haven't?
We're just holding off for five years. We haven't agreed to do anything. Correct. So I just feel that needs to be removed because I don't think that's something that anybody has agreed to do.
Or we can just renew it again.
No, it needs to move down the road a little bit. Things happen very rapidly and, and we're going to get pressure more and more for that property. And, and as much as I respect the county, there needs to be some plans for the future. Everybody else is planning. Where are you going to be in five years? And if you don't have a plan and that shows that, or not making plans, that you're not serious about this, so.
So on, on the resolution title, a resolution to delay the sale of the Fairgrounds parking lot for a period of five years and then strike the rest of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then just strike the last whereas.
And is that in agreement with everyone?
Not the last one.
Yeah, that's the last one.
Yeah, 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 it is.
So are we going to have to bring this back?
I think we can approve it with those changes, correct? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And may I say one more thing?
Yes.
This hasn't been an issue, but my father, he has a parking lot for the hotel and as of recently, during events held at the fairgrounds, people going to the fairgrounds would park at our hotel. And it's not an issue, but can we foresee that in the future could be an issue? Maybe people feel entitled to park there and restrict parking for my hotel's guests. And right now, it'll be okay for the foreseeable future. I could see this becoming an issue for us.
Thank you.
Okay. So if in agreement by the seven of you, you can make a motion to approve resolution with changes. And for the record, the changes would be a resolution to delay the sale of the Fairgrounds parking lot for a period of five years, period, strike the rest, and strike the last whereas, whereas the city commission has agreed to give the Otero County Commission, Staff and Fair Board time to identify a site and develop a phased plan, with those two strikeouts.
Okay, I motion to approve the resolution with said changes.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Guthrie and a second from Commissioner Rorden. Can we put up the vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And motion passes 7-0.
Good job, Priam.
We're going to move on to item 12, Discussion of the Code of Ordinances, Section 2-02-060, Code of Conduct. 2-03-570, Code of Conduct. And 2-02-050, City Commission Use of Social Media.
I just, I put this on just for discussion. When we were doing a little research on that, we realized we actually have two Code of Conducts on the city books, on the ordinances right now. One of them was passed in 2014, one was passed in 2022. And then I had some conversations with the attorney on these because they kind of contradict, some of them, I don't know if you had a chance to read them yet or not, but one states one thing, one states another. And then the social media policy, I think we need to amend that a little bit. I don't know about you guys, I see, sometimes see some things on there from certain, you know, staff members and, and I don't know if it applies to staff or if it just applies to the commission. But, you know, our IPR discussion we had, a lot of the stuff, whether we have disclosures on our pages or not, if you're discussing city business on a Facebook or social media page and it's pertaining to it, then it's technically going to be public record. So I just wanted to have the attorney and staff take a look at these, maybe combine the two into one.
So the, the 2014 Code of Conduct, I thought we rescinded that.
There was another one that was passed in 2019 and that's the one, because I thought we had repealed it as well. So there was actually three at one time. Or we had repealed one and then this other one was put in place, in place of the one from 2019. So, and we just, I guess we didn't even realize we had this other one because it was in a different section. So, and you know, parts of it are kind of the same, but parts of it aren't. I noticed in there, like if, it, it doesn't, it states in there that if you file a complaint, it has to have your name, the complaint, the alleged times, you know, in the original one. Those, it doesn't state anything about the complaint remaining anonymous. And I just think we need to take a look at these and, and clean it up and, and maybe combine the two, take what we like out of both of them or repeal one and keep the other or whatever you guys. Just put it on here for discussion.
I'm confused about the 2014 one. I didn't, I thought, okay.
Yeah, there, there are two Codes of Conduct that are on the books. One is the, the older one. They are in separate sections, which is probably why they first got missed. And so there, there do present, because the, the newest one, the, I believe it's 2022 one, did not repeal the 2014 one. We do have situations where both could apply and both may have different remedies for a similar situation. I don't believe that's come up yet, but that is something that, that could pose some, some challenges without rectifying them. Depending on how the commission would like to proceed, you can always repeal one and keep the other or, as Commissioner mentioned, there can be a merging of the two. And if the commission wishes, I can, I've already kind of started working on a, this is what this one's kind of talking about, this one's what this one's talking about, and then I can present that to the commission on, you know.
At a later date.
Yeah, like at a later date, like, do we want to keep this? Do we not? Which of these rules do we, do we prefer? And so I'd be happy to do that. I've already, already kind of started the breakup, the breakdown of the two different ones.
Yeah, when these, these were originally passed, they're, they're for the, the public. If the public has an issue with an elected official, to utilize as a, as a remedy more than, you know, other elected officials using them against elected officials, so. And, but I, I just feel we need to look at both of them and, and clean it up, the language and, and, you know, that's why I put it on here. I didn't put it as an action item, just to, to have staff look into it, start looking at what we can do, maybe draft something new or, like you said, repeal one, keep the other, whatever we want to do with it, so.
It would have been nice to know which.
I didn't even know this one existed.
It would have been nice if we could have highlighted the conflicts or something so that we could see.
He can bring it back as an action item later, later down the road, like that, highlighting the differences and, you know, I think the one from 2014, after I read it, I think it's a better ordinance than, than this one from 2022. It's a little more clear on the complaint. Says this one was passed December 2nd of 2014, so that's the new one.
And the second one was passed when?
In 20, look at the very, very last page at the bottom. It was passed in November, November 1st of 2022. Like I say, it's not as an action item, it's just discussion to get the ball rolling on, on cleaning this up a little bit.
I like the idea of cleaning it up, combining, doing the difference.
I like the idea of cleaning it up, combining, doing the differences and then presenting those. I think that's smart. In the ever-changing world of social media, I think that's probably a good idea. So if you don't mind doing that, I'd be.
No, absolutely, and and when it got pointed out to me, that's when I, I've already kind of started that. It just, I wasn't ready by by tonight's commission meeting.
We don't expect that, I promise.
But there has to be a mechanism for everybody, for employees, for commissioners.
Oh, absolutely, and and so, but I think this one is just mainly for um, when it starts getting into remedies, if you have two statutes that conflict, then it can get into the who, who are we picking, which one are we going to utilize? Um, and I think both of them, after going through them, um, they use different vehicles for for remedies of of uh of breaches or of conduct and stuff like that. And so it's just cleaning that up, um, and then picking an official vehicle for the commission to.
How uh how long do you need, uh, time-wise, before you can present something back to?
Uh, I think, let's see, we have the next one.
Two weeks, thirty days?
Yeah, I easily would.
We got stuff, I would say September, do the first meeting at September.
Do the first one of September?
Yeah, we got that big thing. Yeah.
She's protecting you.
Thank you. Uh, easily by the first, first of September, I can have um kind of a a breakdown of, this is what, um, I believe it's uh two dash, two dash sixty or zero six.
Oh, six oh is the old, the newer one, and five seven zero is the older one.
Yeah, and then just kind of have a breakdown and then kind of like where they meet in the middle, and then kind of give you guys options of how you want to to rectify where they don't meet.
Okay.
Be great. Thank you.
You guys have any comments?
That's a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Good idea.
Okay, anything else on that item?
No.
Let's move on, um, we're going to move on to item thirteen, appointments to boards and committees. The Almagordo Public Library Board, there are two current vacancies for county-appointed representatives. County-appointed representatives must live in Otero County, but not within Almagordo city limits. These county-appointed representatives must be appointed by the chairman of the County Board of Commissioners. I think I did see something the other day, um, that they are taking applications for that at the county, so I think that's what I saw. Um, airport zoning, there's still one current vacancy for an applicant that lives within the city limits, parks and rec. One upcoming vacancy for an Almagordo Public School representative as of August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. These representatives must be appointed by the APS Board of Education, and APS has been notified of the upcoming vacancy. The senior volunteer programs advisory council, there's three current vacancies for applicants that live within the city limits. One application has been received by Steven Butler. If appointed, this would be his seventh term on the council. Does anybody have any objections? Is Mr. Butler here? No. Anybody have any objections? Okay, then I will appoint him for his seventh term. Hey, if he wants to do it, right? For his seventh term. Um, okay.
How long are their terms? Are they a year?
The term?
Yeah, how long are they?
I don't know. Two years? Isn't it two years?
He's been there for fourteen years, or this will be his seventh term.
He re-plays every two years.
That's dedication.
He should run for office.
Yeah.
What? Why are you laughing?
Fourteen years is a long time.
I'm ready to move on to.
And he doesn't get paid because that's a volunteer job, so.
Fine, then. All right, uh, we're going to move on to item fifteen, no, I'm sorry, item fourteen, recess into executive closed session in compliance with ten dash fifteen dash one to discuss real property, eleven hundred Michigan, Almagordo, and limited personnel matters, the city manager. Uh, do I have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Did I do that right, Rachel?
Yes.
Oh, she was looking at me like I did something wrong, I'm sorry. I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Tapley, can we put up the vote, please?
Are we taking Sharon back there on the phone?
And um Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Aye.
And, yes, someone take Sharon, Commissioner, uh, Mayor Protem with you.
We are now reconvening. We're at item 15, motion to reconvene into open session. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Chapley. Can we put up the vote, please?
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Aye.
And motion passes seven zero. And motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to item 16. It's take any action, if any, as a result of the executive closed section session concerning... Okay, do I have to do these separate, each parcel, or?
No, we can't hear her.
917.
So...
Yeah, R O two two three nine one, or R O two three nine one seven.
Yes.
So I don't have to...
Did you need direction, or did you need a motion?
We need a motion to approve purchasing that.
Purchasing, okay. I'll just make a motion that we approve the purchase of parcel R O two three nine one seven. Do you need the purchase price in there, or no? Of twenty eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to approve the purchase of parcel R O two three nine one seven for a purchase price of twenty eight hundred dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please?
And Mayor Pro Tem McDonald?
Aye.
The chief wants to bid on that property, too.
I feel like there's some ethics violation. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to item 17. And the motion is going to be to open the search for the city manager position utilizing both trifecta and hiring hub executive search. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
I can't.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie. Can we put up the vote, please? Did you get those names?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald?
Aye.
And motion passes seven zero. Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second. You've got two seconds.
Everybody's second.
Second from Commissioner Tapley. Can we put up the vote, please?
And Mayor Pro Tem McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Guthrie, how do you vote?
I'm sorry. There you go.
And motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned.